Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025. We welcome you here this evening. We have some very special events tonight that we're so glad that so many of you could join us. As we normally do at start our meeting, we will have a moment of silence and then we will remain standing to salute our country with our Pledge of Allegiance. As we go to that time, I would like for you to keep several in your thoughts and prayers. Our council member Todd Perdue and his wife Catherine and family, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they go through some things right now that we're praying for that will be, will turn out to be really good. So, we're thinking about Todd and Catherine and all the family there. So, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as we move forward. And just pray for our country. Please keep our country in your thoughts and prayers as we continue to move forward and changes are being made and we're trying to come and be a better place. And please pray for everyone to come together in any way we can. Now, please join us.
Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we will start out with the introduction of, and let's don't remember, we're not going to the dogs, but we are going to introduce them, our canines tonight and bring them out. I'm going to bring Major Wilson up and we're going to meet, first we'll meet Mia with Patrolman Chase Miller, and Caesar with Corporal Herbert Reed, Gingus with Patrolman Caesar Rubio, and the dog that has been with us, Atoz, got it right, Patrolman Logan Barrett. So, Major, glad to have you. Chief Phelps is a little under the weather today, so we decided we better not let him come.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Ms. Childerbrand. Just a quick, you know, our department canine unit's been going on since the late eighties, early nineties. Great, successful program, both as a criminal deterrent and as a community partnership. We're doing a lot of different things with a lot of school groups, a lot of community groups, our citizens' Canine Academy. So, it's just a great thing. First thing I want to do real quick, and he's not expecting this, is all of us are sports fans and it's hard to have a team without a coach. And so Lieutenant Poitras is our Criminal Investigations Division Lieutenant, and he's also a master trainer for police canines. And so, that's huge for us. People have to send their canines and their handlers off to school. That becomes a very expensive endeavor. And so, we're very fortunate to have Lieutenant Poitras here that we do everything in-house, everything in-house. So, that's a big part of the success for our program. Canine Atoz, five-year-old German Shepherd, born and imported from the Czech Republic, and he's been with us since 2021. Patrolman Logan Barrett been with us for about two and a half years. He is a new handler. So, this is his new canine partner and Canine Atoz is new handler. So, they, all the dogs just certified last week, so they're all certified and ready to hit the road. When they certify, it's not only the dog, the dog and the handler have to be certified as a team. And so, I can't, even though I was a past canine handler, I'm not certified to work with Atoz, but Logan Barrett is. And so, done great and he's excited. So, next, Canine Gingus. Canine Gingus is a three-year-old English Springer Spaniel. He was born and imported from the Netherlands and he is a detection dog. And so, scent work, which is narcotics' tracking, evidence searches, things like that. He was assigned to Caesar Rubio and Patrolman, or Master Patrol Officer Caesar Rubio has been with us for about six years.
Said Andy, it's a good thing nobody got up and left when he came in.
Yeah. Right now, we're doing pretty good. We're doing pretty good. Canine Mia. Mia is a three-year-old German short-haired pointer, born and imported from Germany. She is also a single, what we call a single-purpose dog, a scent-detection dog. Her handler, Patrolman Chase Miller, he's been with Lenore Police Department for about two and a half years. And so, these two dogs are, Atoz is a veteran. These two dogs have been at it for a couple months. And so, they've got a lot of continued training to look forward to.
Major, didn't you say that these dogs were purchased with drug money?
They were. All these dogs, every one of them, even our prior dog, all purchased with asset forfeiture money.
That helps the budget.
Yes, it does.
Because they're not cheap.
Canine Caesar is a Belgian Shepherd. He was born and imported from the Netherlands. He is a full patrol dog. And so, he, along with Atoz, are what you call dual-purpose dogs. They are not only trained in scent detection, but they're also trained in apprehension work, handler protection, and different aspects of dual-purpose work. His handler, Corporal Herbert Reed, Corporal Reed has been with us for about four years. And so, this is our new canine unit. And we're excited and a lot of good things ahead, a lot of good things ahead.
Y'all, she gonna do a picture?
We're gonna stay up here, though. I'm gonna be right here. I'm good. Oh, yeah.
We'll do a couple with the camera and a couple with the thing. All right, everybody look at me.
Careful, the way you flash that thing.
Everybody smile. All right, let me do this camera. All right, ready? One, two, three, look at me, cheese, cheese.
Dog biscuit.
All right. Get more people here. We have a canine here, right? That's why we're getting visitors.
You good?
Yes, sir. Unless you have any questions.
All right. Next on agenda, we have a very special recognition. And Doug, we didn't, all these officers didn't come, just to make sure you were safe. Though, tonight is a very special recognition and it's one of those bittersweet times where we want to say so much, so many good thank yous to Doug Johnson and what he has meant to this community and friendship and what he has meant to the City of Lenore, Colwell County, and all the counties that Blue Ridge represents in western North Carolina. Part of the Blue Ridge Board is here tonight. We welcome you guys and all y'all that are here. And we'll get everybody introduced in a little bit. But Doug, it's been a pleasure working with you and we want you to know that we are so excited for you and your retirement. I know your wife and grandchildren and children are all excited that you're going to be with them and well-deserved forty-six years that you have given of yourself to not only the Blue Ridge, but this community in so many ways. So many Appalachian State, and I can name you all so many, that we are excited about and we appreciate it. So, if you'll come up and join me, we have a couple of things that we would like to say special for you. And again, thank you for all that you have meant to us. This resolution is honoring Douglas Wayne Johnson. Whereas, Blue Ridge Energy is a member-owned electric cooperative utility serving some eighty thousand members in Colwell, Watauga, Ash, and Allegheny Counties and part of Wilkes, Avery, and Alexander Counties. And whereas, Douglas Wayne Johnson graduated from Appalachian State University with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, started working at Blue Ridge Energy in 1979, and took over, you, that was right out of college, and took over as Chief Executive Officer of the cooperative ten years later in 1989. And whereas, during his forty-six-year career, Doug led the cooperative with great distinction and vision and implemented many improvements to grow the business. And whereas, these improvement, those improvements included adding a propane and fuel subsidiary in 1998, as well as Ridgeling, a business-to-business dark fiber provider, both of which added jobs and vital services locally, and their success continues to help hold down member rates. And whereas, in 2003, Doug provided the leadership necessary for the cooperative to secure and manage its own wholesale power purchases rather than using outside entities, which has also benefited members by helping hold down rates due to more favorable wholesale power costs. And whereas, Blue Ridge Energy is consistently ranked among the top five of all utilities across the nation for its customer service and has been recognized in the top quartile of all utilities in the nation for reliability. And whereas, Blue Ridge Energy has been a wonderful community partner and has assisted with financing City of Lenore Fire Station Three, the lighting at Matt Cook Stadium in downtown Lenore, has pledged financing for a new City of Lenore Fire Engine, which we're excited about, as well as numerous other projects in Colwell County. And whereas, Douglas has announced his retirement from Blue Ridge Energy at the end of June 2025. Now, therefore, it being resolved that I, as Mayor of the city and on behalf of the Lenore City Council and all of our citizens, do hereby congratulate Douglas Wayne Johnson on his retirement and thank him for providing reliable electricity to residents and businesses in the City of Lenore, Colwell County, and the region. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're very, you're very welcome. One of the things I cherish most is our friendship. One of the things I cherish the most is our friendship. I'll say that.
For sure.
We've been friends a long time.
A long time, yes, we have.
And I have one more thing to present to you tonight. Was it very special? But this is a key to the city, the highest honor that we can present to anyone in our community. This means that you have served not only the City of Lenore, but Colwell County in this area in just such a wonderful and special way. And I'm proud to present to this, presented to Doug Johnson, Chief Executive Officer, Blue Ridge Energy, in honor and recognition of forty-six years of outstanding and dedicated public service, nineteen seventy-nine to present, forty-six years, by Lenore City Council, Josephville Gibbons, Mayor, and it's March 18th, 2025. You're very welcome. You're very welcome. I'll hold this one and let you speak if you want to.
Well, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the City Council and staff of our great city, I have always said with great pride, Blue Ridge Energy is headquartered in Lenore, North Carolina. And we were started in Lenore and Colwell County in nineteen thirty-six. And I have bragged about that for my entire career and have been proud of the fact that we're such an important part of this wonderful city. I moved here in nineteen eighty-six, Todd. It's hard to believe that I've lived in, I lived in Colwell County for thirty-nine and almost thirty of those in Lenore. So, I love this place. I love the people of this town and this county. And Blue Ridge is so honored to be a part, not only in providing electricity, but as the mayor said, in doing things to make life better for the people in this area. So, I am highly honored. I deeply appreciate the very kind words and I appreciate the key to the city. That's very nice and deeply appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to introduce the others here with Blue Ridge? I was going to get that instead of me because I would miss somebody.
Okay, we got Jeff Jones, President of our board, Kelly Melton is Secretary Treasurer of our Board of Directors, then Katie Woodle, who is heir apparent to the CEO. She'll take the reins on April one, and then I'll work for her for three months till I retire. So, we found that to be kind of interesting. And I told Katie, I said, "Well, you're going to be my boss for the next three months. I'll just have to do what you tell me to do." So, the role will reverse. Amy Crowder will become the next Chief Financial Officer, replacing Katie. Crystal Spencer is the next Chief Administrative Officer. She's in an elect role right now. And then Jason, I'm drawing your last name blank.
Legal. He's my next door neighbor, Reddick.
I knew I'd do it somewhere, so God forgive you. Jason, forgive you. Jason Legal, who's Director of Community Relations, Member Relations at Blue Ridge. So, did I miss any others?
Alan.
Alan, did I miss you?
My Chief Operating Officer and one of the top heroes of the L.A. is Alan Burke, one of the guys that helped us hold it all together through the toughest outage in our history. So, Alan, my apologies.
Don't worry.
Heroes are behind me.
Heroes are coming up.
I'd be remiss if I didn't call out Rob and Nicholas from Duke. We were hugging at the beginning saying, you know, she works for Duke, I work for Blue Ridge Energy. But we buy all our power from Duke Energy and we've been good friends for a long time and I appreciate you being here too, Rob.
Wonderful relationship.
Very much so, very much so.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. We're gonna do a picture, Council?
All right. It's like y'all done this before. Few times. I was told that key will start with a fire trucks. One, two, three, cheese.
Thank you very much. Doug, thank you again, and we're very proud to have shared this with you for so many years. Look forward to seeing you. As you said a minute ago, I'll see you in Boone for sure. Okay, now we have another special recognition tonight, and this is on behalf of the City Council. We're going to be presenting some proclamations to Representatives of Blue Ridge Energy and Duke Energy in honor and celebration of Lineman Appreciation Day, which is recognized annual on Tuesday, April the 18th. So, we're going to do that here in March. And we have a couple of proclamations to give. I'm going to ask Robin and the linemen if they'll come up and Blue Ridge, and we'll do it, we're gonna do them together, if that's okay? Yeah. Got some linemen coming up. And Alan, if you want to join us, please.
First of all, thank y'all for what you do every day. I know with Alim was here, what a job, what a task. It was unbelievable. I remember, I woke up the next day and walked out of my house and my street was blocked. I drove out, this street was blocked, this street was blocked. I'm going, holy cow. This is gonna be a nightmare. And it was. But you guys were there until it was all restored. And I heard, I know stories from Robin and Doug and Alan, that you didn't go home until you had people's power on. So, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for what it is and means. You know, you don't know how much we miss it. So, I was out five and a half days and I thought I was in the worst place in the world. But I wasn't near what some people went through or are still going through at this stage. So, we do appreciate everything that you do. And thank you for keeping the power on and the lights on. This is a proclamation for line worker appreciation day. Whereas, on April 10th, 2013, the United States Senate passed a resolution to recognize April 18th annually as National Lineman Line Worker Appreciation Day. And whereas, the profession of the electrical line worker is steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas, line workers are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other public safety officials and to expedite the return of vital electrical power to our communities. And whereas, these brave men and women work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, risking and sometimes losing their lives to keep electricity flowing. And whereas, line workers are often faced with dangerous conditions far from their families as they work to construct and maintain energy infrastructure throughout the state of North Carolina and the United States. And whereas, line workers must use their technical knowledge, physical strength, and ingenuity to achieve success in challenges they face every day. And whereas, the City of Lenore City Council thanks these skilled, heroic line workers who brave hurricanes, ice storms, snowstorms, floods, and other natural disasters to maintain our community's energy grid. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, as Mayor, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Friday, April the 18th, 2025, as Line Worker Appreciation Day in the City of Lenore, North Carolina, this the 18th day of March, 2025. Thank y'all.
And we would like to get a picture. How would you want to, you want to do this one?
Who all's gonna be in it?
Everybody.
You gonna do everybody together or you want to do the Duke group and the Blue Ridge group?
All their friends.
Like Doug said, we're friends.
Let's do them together. Council, be up there.
All right. Can you open the resolution up to kind of show the paper in a display? That, yep.
Not the way you read it, would it?
Put your hands back when they're by yourself. Mayor, do this one.
All right.
Mayor, you're good. I think I see everybody. Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll do a couple with the camera. One, two, three, cheese. Anybody else? One, two, three, cheese. I think I got it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Again, the importance of how much these people mean to us is unbelievable in our community. So, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Thank you, Katie. We look forward to working with you very much. So, thank you. Doug, thank you. All right. The exciting evening. It's great to honor such great people tonight. All right, we'll move on then to matters scheduled for public hearings this evening. This first one is conditional rezoning request. This is for 1373 Delwood Drive, southwest. We'll hold the hearing to consider a conditional zoning district, CZ 11. Request is submitted by applicant Joe Bogdan to convert the education building on the Whittnall United Methodist Church site at 1373 Delwood Drive into a group dwelling with other site improvements and development standards. Staff recommends approval of the conditional zoning ordinance based on the following statement. The planning board also approves this rezoning request based upon the evidence presented through the planning board. Note, the six special conditions proposed for the CZ 11 ordinance are listed on page four of the staff report included in the agenda packet. We will not read those that are included. The consistency statement is all decisions of the planning board and the City Council should be based on consistency of the proposal with a comprehensive plan and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The comprehensive plan calls for progressive and sound land use policies that take stakeholder interest into consideration in order to ensure that the city grows fairly, effectively, and efficiently. Additionally, the comprehensive plan calls for the promotion of housing for people in all stages of life and the desire to build community character and revitalize neighborhoods. Whittnall is a focus neighborhood of the 2045 comprehensive plan, and this workforce housing proposal is a legitimate step in the right direction. The proposed CZ 11 district is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it allows for intensification of development on this property with a variety of housing types to meet the changing needs of Lenore's residents of all ages. Okay, I will open the public hearing and I will bring our planning director, Hannah Williams, to the microphone.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gibbons and Council. Yes, this conditional zoning ordinance application was submitted by Blowing Rock Country Club. The President and Chairman of the Board of Directors is Joe Bogdan, the applicant who is in the audience tonight. And the General Manager of the club is also here with us tonight. Excuse me, I'm going to bring up the staff report so we have our reference material. Okay, this site is the site of Whittnall United Methodist Church owned by the Western North Carolina Methodist Conference, and it's under contract by the club. It is developed with a sanctuary, which you can see here, as well as an education fellowship hall building, as well as a traditional single-family house used as a parsonage on the site and a couple of storage sheds. This tract here to the northeast is part of their property and part of the rezoning, as is this parcel across the street on Delwood Drive that is also part of the rezoning. This site is split-zoned R15 and R6. Basically, the sanctuary building is in R6 and the rest of the site is in R15. R15 is a single-family zoning district and R6 is a multifamily rezoning, or residential district, excuse me. The proposed zone is going to be the CZ 11. It would be reflected that way on the zoning map. R6 would be the base district. So, R15 would go away completely. The education, one of the conditions in the conditional zoning ordinance would be for the education fellowship. would be for the education fellowship hall building to become a dormitory with about 16 bedrooms, as well as communal kitchen and bathroom facilities. The parsonage would be used as a single-family house with traditional occupancy less than six or so. It would not be a group dwelling. The sanctuary would be redeveloped as something else, not really decided on that at this time, but the conditional zoning ordinance proposes several permitted uses to be considered a continuation to be used as a church or a cultural community facility, an event venue, or a daycare, a childcare facility. There's potential for more redevelopment on this site, on these vacant tracts, and the proposed zoning district would be R6 for that, and basically whatever is allowed in R6 would be allowed here on this site with several different kind of development standards that you wouldn't find in a traditional R6 district, which mostly just has to do with accessing the property. If there were to be new parcels here for, say, a townhome development or bungalow court, small cottage development, excuse me, then they would not need to have public road frontage, but they would need to have common improvements for privately maintained driveway through an HOA or some other kind of property management association. And let's see if I have anything else. The proposal is supported by several comprehensive plan policies, which include increasing workforce housing, adding that missing middle housing type or housing types where appropriate, and reusing a vacant building. So we think that reusing the Whittnall Church site with its productive use would be a great, you know, reuse of the building. Also, planning board recommends approval of this conditional zoning ordinance and adopted the consistency statement that Mayor Gibbons has just read for us, and I want to submit the staff report for the public record that you can see here. And I wanted to just show you the, let's scroll in here, the concept plan that would be recorded along with the ordinance.
Will you review the six conditions?
Yes, I can. I will leave the site plan up here, and I will go over the conditions that are in the ordinance. So the zoning ordinance adds permitted uses by building. The sanctuary is referred to as Building C. The parsonage house is referred to as Building B, and the education building, what would become the dormitory, is Building A. Building A would have a group dwelling for seven or more non-related residents. Building B would be single-family residential, a dwelling for one to six non-related residents. Building C would be permitted to have a community cultural facility, church, synagogue, mosque, daycare center, and event venue, and it provides for a definition of an event venue. And then the undeveloped lots, lots D and E, they have no additional permitted uses outside of the R6 zoning district. As for density, the density of multifamily uses shall default to R6 zoning district. 7.2 dwelling units per acre is the density allowed by Wright, and 15 dwelling units per acre is the maximum density allowed with a special use permit. So if any, if we wanted to maximize density to 15 dwelling units per acre, they would come back for a special use permit on those undeveloped lots. Density is further broken down for the education building, where any two beds would constitute one dwelling unit. So that's provided for in this zoning ordinance. And as for minimum lot size and frontage, parcels on the affected lots shall maintain the minimum lot size identified in the City of Lenore zoning ordinance and R6 standards. There would be no public roadway frontage for individually platted residential lots for townhomes or bungalow courts or patio homes, as long as the parent tract of the residential development maintains a minimum frontage of 25 feet on a public road. If private roads or common space are developed in conjunction with platted lots, a homeowners association must be established to provide for the ongoing maintenance of the private roads and the common space. As for ingress and egress, the access point along Delwood Drive shall be maintained and shall be available for use by the existing buildings as well as future development on the site. So a future driveway could be developed through the parking lot on Delwood Drive, which is right here. A secondary access point must be provided for any development containing 30 or more residential units, which may be a private driveway off of Connolly Springs Road or Delwood Drive. There's a driveway to access this property right here on Connolly Springs Road, and it wraps around the campus right here. A cross-access easement shall be required for use by both the upland acreage and the existing building. So if Blowing Rock Country Club were to ever sell off this tract, the zoning ordinance would still rule, and they would need to provide cross-access between the properties. As for lighting, all new and replacement lighting fixtures shall be fully cut off and shielded as to prevent spillover onto adjacent residential properties. As for design, all new, non-residential, attached, single-family, and multifamily structures would need to meet our design standards in the zoning ordinance. And as for signage, they would be able to follow sign regulations in section 1108 of the zoning sign ordinance. And those are the conditions that are provided for in this ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions, and as I said, the applicants are also here.
Like you, Hannah? Any questions of Hannah concerning this rezoning request? We are in the public hearing. Counsel? Okay. Thank you, Hannah. Stay close in case. Anyone else want to address the council concerning this rezoning request? Now's the time to do so. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for any action.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to consider recusing me from this vote. The applicant's a client of our firm, and as such, we receive financial benefit from that relationship. And I've spoken with council, and he would advise that I be recused.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to recuse.
We have a motion from Mayor Protem Stevens that we recuse council member Purdue from this vote for the rezoning. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion concerning this rezoning request as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve the zoning change as requested.
All right, and a motion from council member Presswood that we approve the conditional rezoning request for 1373 Delwood Drive as presented as conditional zoning district CZ 11. Any other comments, questions? And make the staff report part of the record, is that, okay? That is part of the motion. That's okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
What he said.
What he said. Okay. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Thank you for being with us and doing this. Thank you, Hannah. All right. Next is our, we moved our consent agenda items. This tonight consists of minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Item B is minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, February 25th. Item C are minutes of the city council budget retreat meeting of Friday, February 28th. Item D is the resolution, approval of the resolution presented to Mr. Doug Johnson upon his retirement as chief executive officer of Blue Ridge Energy. And item E is a location approval. This is being asked for by the Rotary Club. This is for a Rotary peace poll at the Rotary Soccer Complex. This is a recommendation of approval of placing a Rotary peace poll at that soccer complex requested by Jamie Willis, who is the executive director of United Way and the president of the Lenore Rotary Club. So glad to have Jamie with us tonight. Said she didn't want to speak, but if we need to, we can ask her questions if we need. I know you will. We appreciate that. The peace poll is a monument that displays the message, "May peace prevail" on earth in different languages on each of its four or six sides. There are an estimated of over 250,000 peace poles in every country in the world, dedicated as monuments to peace. This poll, the poll will have languages in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Hebrew on that. So that is your consent agenda items, and I will turn it over to council for any discussion. Handle a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
A motion from council member Purdue to approve the consent agenda as presented. No other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The peace poll can be done. Thank you very much. Let there be peace, I like it. This guy's a. All right. Next on our agenda are requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone tonight who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. If you will, please come forward and give us your name and address, and we'd be glad to hear what you have to say. All right, seeing no one there? Always glad to have people here. Jennifer, thank you for coming, always. On that, all right, we'll move on. We do not have reports of boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. The planning board will meet on Monday, March 24th, at 5:30 in the chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, March 25th, 8:30 a.m., and that's the third floor city hall. That will be your budget meeting to kick off with more numbers, and we'll have our engineer there to talk about the water and sewer, capital improvement program, and all those good things. So I guess come and be prepared to stay a little bit for that. Then also, the Foothills Research Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, March 25th, at noon at the airport. Tonight, we have one item for council action. This is the acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for TIP EB 5806, which is Hospital Avenue sidewalk project to Neil Grady and Construction Company, Inc. for the sum of $2,594,361. As most of you are aware, and some predates you, but in 2016, city council was awarded funding for this project through the Federal Highway Administration, North Carolina DOT administered, locally administered program, the LAP program. At that time, it was anticipated this project would cost a million dollars. 800,000 federal, state, and 20% would be the city, $200,000. In 2017, council awarded this project, or at least engineering, the design of this project to Weather Engineering out of Raleigh, and the project started design work. Due to NCDT funding constraints and COVID and other various reasons, this project was paused for a period of time. Then in August of 2023, a DOT provided us a notice to proceed to begin moving forward. Now, the project cost had increased from the $1 million to $3.17 million. As such, the city applied for additional funds to go back and help supplement that funding. We did receive additional funding, $2.536 million through the LAP program, and the city's 20% match, $634,000 to come to today. In 2024, you selected mattering Craig Engineers out of Hickory to go back and perform the construction engineering inspection services for this project. With those things done, the city has completed the design work on the project. The right of ways have been acquired for the project. Utilities relocation work is underway, most is complete, and we're here today. So in December of 2024, we put the project out to bid. The city received zero bids due to the demand of contractors right now in the market. Per the general statutes, we went back and rebid the project with a bid opening date of February 27th of last month. One bid was received, that was from Neil Grady and Construction Company out of Hickory, and as I mentioned before, the sum of that is $2.594 million. The bid's been reviewed by Weather Engineers for completeness and compliance with the statutes and the bidding requirements, and they've issued a letter of recommendation for award in your packet. The bid's a little bit over the construction estimate, but it's below the 10% threshold, I think, of DOT, so they're satisfied with that. So our new project total cost for this project to go back and, I guess, put sidewalks from Harper Avenue out to 321 to tie into the library and into the Greenway is now $3.5 million in that neighborhood. So based on discussions with the designs engineer, we think we can go back and have some cost savings in the project to bring the project back into budget, and so therefore we recommend award of this project to Neil Grady and Construction. Let me go back and also thank Charles Beck, who was here when it first started, Jared Wright, who was in public works in that period of time, Ed Evans, who worked with us, John Hogan today, who's brought it to the finish line, Jenny Wheelock, Hannah Williams, several folks from the Western Piedmont Council Government's NPO. We've gone through several DOT division engineers during this time. So, and several council members. But we're here tonight to go back and hopefully get this project moving forward, and I think John Hogan, if you have specific questions, he can probably answer those, or maybe Hannah Williams can as well, but this has been a journey to get to this point in time. With that, I'll take questions or defer to those folks.
Any questions, Mr. Hildebrand? How about a hallelujah? Let's get it done before he goes up again.
And this award would be contingent upon DOT signing off on everything, so, which we anticipate that will happen, but that's kind of where we are.
That's great.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, sir. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager concerning the awarding of the bid to Neil Grady and Construction Company and the amount he talked about and all of everything that he just said. I'm not going to repeat all that, so entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept this lowest responsive bid we've received and approval of the project.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stevens makes a motion to accept the bid of the lowest bidder and to move on with the project. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. We're finally on the move with that one. All right, we'll move on to report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Roy.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing at all, okay. Everything good over in your world over there?
Doing fine over here. Would you like me to sue somebody?
We would know if it was.
All right. I think we've covered everything from the mayor's office tonight that we've been talking about, and I don't know of anything else coming up. Anything from any of our council members that we need to discuss? None of them? Everybody silent? All right, okay. If nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.